The records show that everyone is here this evening. We've got one agenda ahead of us, most of the evening anyway. The approval of the minutes of the May 12th meeting, motion please?
Steve Police will make a motion to approve that.
Danny Green.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next is the presentation of a thousand dollar scholarship to Galen Mayer for Metro Bureau and Mr. Komet's gonna go down there for that.
Galen, are you here? Come on up.
He's over here.
Right here. Ernie is here from the Metro Bureau. The Metro Bureau is a group that schools from the tri-county area and colleges are involved in. A student has to, am I stealing your thunder?
No, you're doing quite well. You have every right because you are the past president of Metro Bureau.
Students have to apply, seniors have to apply for the scholarship. They have to be going into a field where they are going to be giving back to society. In whatever way, nursing, medicine, teaching, all different areas that way. Students from all the high schools from the tri-county area first in application. A group then reads the evaluation, the applications. They then grade one of them and a student is chosen for the thousand dollar scholarship. And I'll shut up at this point.
First off, let me say good evening to all the members of the Roseville Community School District. It's really an honor and I thank you so much for allowing me that opportunity. Thank you to members of the Board of Education. I really do appreciate it on behalf of Metro Bureau. And certainly to Superintendent, all that you've done very good for the Metro Bureau and of this community. So it's an honor to be here, thank you. Our main purpose, of course, as Superintendent's already mentioned here, is to honor someone who has exhibited outstanding scholarship. And as a result, made it very easy for our scholarship committee of the Metro Bureau to select her and honor her. With that, I'd like to be able to read this proclamation before giving her her special award. The Executive Board of the Metropolitan Detroit Bureau of School Studies Incorporated is proud to present a Metro Bureau Scholarship Award to Galen Mayer of the ninth of the 2014 graduating class of Roseville High School, Roseville Community Schools. A student who exemplifies the following of scholarship integrity, hard work, and attainment. May this scholarship bring future success as you serve humanity in your chosen profession. On this day, May 19, 2014. Galen, congratulations. And I have with me what we use at her later. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
While you sit down, tell us what field you're gonna go into?
I'm going veterinary medicine.
I'm here with Karen, my mom, and Tracy Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Members of the Board.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Roseville High School Top Ten Students Recognition and our High School Leader Recognition. We're going to ask you when you come up, be prepared to introduce who's with you tonight. And we'll see if we can do this pretty organized, so here we go, the fun part.
What we're gonna do tonight is we're gonna acknowledge a lot of the leaders at our high school. A couple of things, many of the kids in this room are leaders in multiple groups or clubs. So when they get their first certificate, it will list all those clubs for them, okay? So they may come up a second time, but you don't see them walking away with a piece of papers because we found they appreciated them being all in one, so they could frame one, okay? And we checked and rechecked, but heaven forbid if somebody's name got misspelled or something, please bring it to me and we'll get it fixed, okay? At this point in time, if we could have anybody from the top ten of this year's senior class would please come up.
Why don't you stand next to Teresa so it doesn't...
I'm only gonna take a minute. Good evening, I'm Pete Hedberg, I'm the Principal of Roseville High School. And I'm very proud to introduce our top ten students this evening. They are hard, hard-working students. And between our valedictorian, Jonah Oleksiak, salutatorian Rebecca Harris, and the next eight, Joe Whiskey, Alexandria Lawrence, Megan Amico, Brian Hudson, Nikki Franchi, Sarah Schneider, Brandon Kraszewski, and Rachel Hart. And I'm gonna have them all take a moment to introduce their parents and people that came with them. We're talking about a hair of GPA between all of these kids. 3.9998, 3.9997, 9996, 5. It's so close, they're all so hard-working. We know what they've given up to get those kinds of grades, we know how hard they work. And they give back too. So they're really special kids, we're really proud of them. And thank you for working so hard, being in our top ten.
After I graduate, I plan to continue the early college program I'm in and then further pursue my education to become an architect. And today I have my dad here with me, Brian Hudson Senior.
After I graduate, I am going to go to Oakland University and I am going to study acting to become an actor because people who study acting become actors. Oh, I'm Jonah Oleksiak. I am here with my mom, Marie Oleksiak, whom many of you may better know as Mrs. O., the counselor. Yeah, that's never been awkward, going to school with my mom.
I'm Rebecca Harris. I'm here with my parents, Vicky Harris and Jim Harris. I'm planning on going to U of M Ann Arbor and majoring in neurology.
I'm Joseph Whiskey. I'm here with my dad, Ken, and my friend Scott King. I plan to pursue a career in physics, starting by going to Wayne State University.
I'm Alexandria Lawrence and I'm here with my mom, Diane Vesna, my dad, Scott Lawrence, my little sister, Victoria Lawrence, and my girlfriend, Melissa Klein. After high school, I plan on going to the University of Michigan Dearborn to study political science.
Hi, I'm Nikki Franchi. I'm here with my mother and father, Ken Franchi and Nancy Franchi. Next year I'm going to Macomb and eventually State to study veterinary medicine.
My name is Brandon Karcheski. I'm here with my father today, James Karcheski, in the back over there. After high school, I plan on attending the University of Michigan Ann Arbor in the fall and pursuing my dreams in the medical career.
My name is Rachel Hart and I'm here with my parents, Sally and Robert Hart. And I plan on going to Macomb to study English.
May they public education, huh, Mr. Police? Should I get you going on that one?
No, he's only... The world's in good hands. But we didn't, he was kinda, didn't brag about himself. The ACT is the college entrance exam and a perfect score is 36. I think he's the only kid in the county that had a perfect 36.
My name's Eric Hovner, I'm the bowling coach. Of course, this is my son Kyle Hovner, he is the captain and leader of the bowling team this year.
Do you have long bowling?
Yeah.
About 300?
My highest game is a 296.
Who's he here with?
I'm here with my father and my mother over there, Eric Hovner and Kim Hovner.
Before I introduce the Anime Club, I just wanna put in a plug here for Kyle Hovner, who's very, very modest. Kyle, you, in the finals tournament, the state tournament, you came up how many pins short to the eventual state champion? It was very close, was it not, Dad? I mean, Kyle's only loss in the finals of that tournament was to the eventual state champion. So that lets you know what a solid quality bowler he was and how close he was to it. So congratulations. I have the Anime Club here tonight. I'm gonna let their president, Brianna, speak to you a little bit about what Anime is. I do know, but I can't put it in words as well as she could.
Well, Anime is like a form of Japanese cartoon. It's very entertaining and it has a very unique art style. And it gets very confusing sometimes, but that's okay.
How long you been doing it?
Forever. Forever.
I'm with my mom and stepdad, Beth and Tony Malart. Hey, how you doing?
Hi, I'm Catherine and I'm here with my mother, she's over there. Anime Clubs just, honestly, it's a bunch of nerds and we like drawing, so...
Our choir does a great job. They've performed very well at MSBOA. They're beautiful to listen to. And to this year's commencements, you'll get a chance to hear them during the commencement ceremony in a wonderful venue that just does a wonderful job with their sound. It's beautiful, so please introduce yourself and who you are here with tonight.
Hi, I'm Amanda Wallow. I'm the Vice President of Symphonic Choir. And I came here with my best friend Heidi over there and her mom and her mom's boyfriend, so Marie, Mary Bogle, and Bob, what's your last name, Bob? I know it starts with a W, so...
Hi, my name's Violet Nacovik. I'm here with my dad, Cola, my mom, Christina, my three brothers, my sister, Selena, Robert, Martin, and Joseph. And I'm part of Trouble Choir.
Hi, I'm Samantha. I'm here with my dad, Dan, and my stepmom, Karen.
I'm Amber. I'm the Public Relations Coordinator of the Trouble Choir. And I'm here with my mom, Tracy Smith.
I'm here, here with my mom, she's like way over there. And I'm the Trouble Choir, yeah.
My name's Mary Domna and I am the Librarian of Trouble Choir. And my dad is here with me, Jeffrey Domna.
Hi, I'm the sponsor of the Drama Society. And I want you to know that my other three students, who couldn't be here tonight because they're working, were very excited when they got their letters. But like all seniors, they're trying to make money for college next year, so they couldn't be here. So we're gonna let Sarah tell you about what we did this year.
I have a job too, okay? My name is Sarah. And I've been in drama for the past six, seven years. And Ms. O.'s been there through the whole time, luckily. And this year we did Love Magic and Miss Haps, which was like a rewrite of Shakespeare. And then we did The Cinderella Musical, where I was the stepsister. And it's just really fun and everyone's just like one giant big family. And you get to know the, like, the sponsors as like your mother, like Ms. Wool over there. And it's just a lot of fun, you get to meet new people and everyone's just very welcomed there. And it's an honor to be in drama, no matter what.
I'm here with my mom and dad, Pat and Dan Dorshkin.
I'm the president, Brittany Chessmuhomes, of the Chess Club, Chess in Uker. I'm with here with my mom and my sister, Tracy Baker and Aston Holmes, and my brother.
Hi, my name is Malik Mahomes and I'm here with the Chess Club. I'm Vice President. This is my brother and he's president. Thank you.
I'm the younger one and I'm the president.
Sarah, I'm glad you're coming back up from marching band. While you guys are getting settled, Sarah said she'd been in drama for six years, but her mother says she's been involved in drama for about 18.
All right, good evening. These fine young men and women up here are demonstrating a long-term commitment. Most of them started with an instrument, at least in fourth grade. Some of them, I remember from really small, trying to play notes on the song flute back in fourth grade. And they've all been in the marching band for two, three, four years. And it's a really great opportunity for them to be that public face of the Roseville High School instrumental music department at the football games and the parades. And these students here have gone that extra mile getting ready and leading the other students in the marching band, giving up summertime, giving up weekends, giving up evenings and things like that. So just a strong sense of commitment by all these fine young men and women up here.
My name's Tyler Berger. I was the section leader of Low Brass this year. And I'm here with my dad, Bill Berger, my mom, Beth Berger, and my grandpa, Don Clark.
Hi again, I'm Sarah. I was the trumpet section leader this year and I am still here with my parents, Pat and Dan Dorshkin.
Hi, I'm Reba Stanley. I'm one of the color guard captains and I'm here with my mom and little sister.
Hi, I'm the other Sarah. I was the section leader for the clarinet section. I'm here with my mom and my dad and my brother.
Hi, I'm Johnny, Battleman T. I'm the alto saxophone section leader, sophomore. And I'm here with my mom, dad, and grandma.
Hi, I'm Nick. I was the head drum major this year and I'm here with my mom and my dad.
Hi, I'm Dominique Brandon Hall. I am assistant drum major, second from Nick. And I play the drums. And I'm here with my mother and my grandmother, Joanne Walker, Emma Walker, Swack.
I'm Brianna Blanco and I'm the other color guard captain. And I'm here with my family and my best friend.
My name's Josh Rolder. I was the section leader of Drumline this year. And my mom's with me right here.
We have our Honor Society officers here tonight, Marissa Gallow, Brianna Blanco, and Patricia Parker. They do a phenomenal job leading with their character. Their academic prowess. And one of the biggest things that our Honor Society does as a service project for our school is they provide tutors to the other students. And that is invaluable and it takes a lot of hard work. We really appreciate their efforts. Fantastic kids. And they lead the school in many endeavors. The tutoring is one of the biggest and we appreciate it so much. Also, put in a plug for your awards tonight, girls, when it comes across, okay? Who's ever in charge of that.
I'm Marissa Gavell. And my parents, Cheryl and Jerry Gavell, brought me tonight.
I'm Patricia Parker. I'm the president and my mom and dad, Lorraine and Brian, brought me here tonight. And Wednesday is NHS's awards night. Be sure to be there if you got your invite. I'm Brianna Blanco and I'm Secretary of NHS. And I'm here with my family and my best friend.
This is the business staff of the Panther Prowl, our school paper. And I have to tell you that this year has been one of the best years ever for the Panther Prowl. We have mass distribution on the Panther Prowl now. Every student is eligible to get a copy of it, every staff member's eligible to get a copy of it. And you really should encourage your student to bring that paper home. It's also connected to our webpage at school. They've done some fantastic articles this year. Very professionally done, they're doing a great job. So we really appreciate their hard work.
Hello, my name is Macie. And I am one of the sports editor for the Panther Prowl. And I'm here with my mom, Mel Gazata, my grandma, Daniela, and my little pain-in-the-butt brother, Jacob.
Hi, I'm Megan. I am the other sports editor of the Panther Prowl and I'm here with my mom.
Hi, I'm Sarah. And I take pictures and I also write stories. And I'm still here with my parents.
I'm Nicholas Johnson. I'm the layout editor for the Panther Prowl. And I'm here with my girlfriend Sarah and her family.
Hi, I'm Kristen Frazier. I'm a copy editor on the Panther Prowl. And I'm here with my mom, Tracy, and my sister, Caitlin.
Hi, I'm Rachel Hart. I'm also a copy editor for the Panther Prowl. And I'm here with my parents.
These folks do a great job in that paper. Their instructor, Ms. Drewin, has been a fabulous job as the publisher. We're really proud of it. So students, make sure kids take copies home with their parents, tell them to. Not that that'll work, but we wanna make them available to you and they are on the web. It's a great paper, you should be really proud of your school paper, they do a great job.
Okay, this is really two different groups, but they kind of are the same thing. One is called Teens Talking Truth, which is T3. And they are a group of kids that work to kind of promote no underage drinking, smoking, alcohol, that kind of thing. And they work really closely with our care of southeast Michigan, which is on the corner of Utica and Masonic. That's where they meet. And they meet once a month and they do a big project every year, like they do something for Kicks Butts Day or they have a meeting with other teens in the county. And those three are, have been doing it for a long time. And we are losing several of them. So we would, except any underclassmen that want to join that group, we will take you. And the other kids are up here for the Roseville Community Coalition, which is also a group that kind of talks about not, something like awareness of drugs. And so they do a project every year. This year we did it in the fall. And we have a much younger group. Ms. Delpias used to be at the middle school and she would get them in seventh grade and I would get to know them and I'd grab them in ninth grade and we'd continue. Now we don't really have that feeder from the middle school because we're both at the high school. So we kind of are getting them in ninth grade and restarting. So we are mostly ninth, one tenth, and two twelfth graders. So we are working on building that program back up again. That's Ms. Delpias.
I'm Savannah McSwain. I have found out today I am the president of this group. And I'm here today with my nana, Cindy.
I'm Barakuniv. I'm here with my mother, Jessica, my father, Michael, my little brother Junior, and then my sister Alyssa. And I am apparently the co-treasurer of this.
I am Ricky Sackelfour and I am the Vice President. And I came here with my dad.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Hartwell. I'm the Secretary of Roseville Coalition and part of the T3. And I'm with my mom, my dad, my brother, and my boyfriend.
Hi, I'm Takaya Harris. I'm part of T3. I'm here with my mom, my granny, my sister's brothers, my best friend, and my boyfriend.
Hi, I'm DeWine Graham. I'm in T3. I'm here with my girlfriend Stephanie and her family.
Hi, I'm Zachary Talib. And I'm here with my aunt, my uncle, and my mom's boyfriend. I'm the co-treasurer of...
We just wanna say that these kids raised enough money to no doubt $500 for the vest for the drug dog for the police department. I'm Anne Chef. I'm the sponsor of Say It Along with Sue Dzidzalowski. Brooke is our, kind of our jack-of-all-trades. We also try to promote making good decisions at school. We do a red ribbon week. We did a chili cook-off to raise money to help support some of the things. We help sponsor a speaker to come in before senior week for the seniors.
Hi, I'm Carly. I'm Secretary for Spanish Club. And I'm here with my mom and my sister.
Hello, my name's Dave Keener. I'm the advisor for Static. And while I've got the mic, I came with my daughter, Ellie.
Hello, my name is Audrey. I'm the Secretary of the Static Club. And I came here with my mom and dad. Static is basically us talking about God. It's like a little Bible study. And we also do fundraisers, like a pasta for pennies.
I'm Sarah Pierrefield. I came with my mom, Tracy Pierrefield, my brother, Matthew Pierrefield. He's in the club too, but he's not an officer. I'm the president. Static stands for Students Taking Action Together, Christ. It's, we pray a lot in there. We have a prayer box in the office where we pray for the entire school's prayer intention, so it's nice. We did pasta for pennies, like she said. We also went to the National Day of Prayer a couple weeks ago, so that was... the National Day of Prayer a couple weeks ago, so that was cool.
I'm Caitlin, I'm the vice president and I have to say thank you to Matthew because this past year has been rough on me, I recently got, I'm taking medicine for my seizures and he's been there, so thank you Matthew. I'm here with my aunt and my mom.
Hi, I'm Joy Parker, I'm one of the captains of the Step Team and I'm here with my mom and my dad.
Hi, I'm Taylor King, I'm here with my uncle and my aunt and I'm just happy to be here, I'm captain of the Step Team and this has just helped us and we've progressed from this, so yay Step Team.
Hi, Mr. McKens, I'm only a assistant principal as an athletic director to high school and the Step Team actually, these young ladies and there was one other one that came up to me and said, hey, we wanna do a Step Team and they had had one before, so I kinda just led them a little bit and said, hey, you guys can kinda do what you want, they would show me the dances and I would approve them and then they were off and running, so they created everything, they got all the girls to be in it, they did the whole thing, all I kinda did was oversee them a little bit, so these girls are really awesome and they really kinda led themselves, so I really didn't have to do much.
You're not doing it with them?
No. They did it all by themselves.
Good evening, I'm Christina Ventimiglia, one of the advisors to Student Assembly and these wonderful students up here spend countless hours every school year planning Homecoming Week and all the spirit days involved with that week and the parade and the dance and all that fun stuff that goes along with it, they plan prom, they host a food drive and a toy drive and they are just an excellent group of students to work with and we're very proud of them.
My name's Jacob Carrick and I've been part of Student Assembly, both junior and senior year, and I'm here with my mom, Wendy Carrick.
I'm Marissa Gavell and I've been a part of Student Assembly for all four years and I'm the vice president and I'm here with my mom and dad.
I'm Brianna Blanco and I've been a part of Student Assembly all four years, I'm president of Student Assembly and I'm here with my family, my best friend.
Heidi and Amber are here with us tonight from the Writing Club, I'm gonna let them introduce themselves and ask one or both of them to tell us a little bit about the Writing Club and what you guys have been writing.
Hi, my name is Heidi Bogel, I'm here with my.
Test.
Okay, take two. Hi, my name's Heidi Bogel, I am here with Writing Club, for Writing Club, I am here with my best friend Amanda, my mother Mary Bogel and her boyfriend Bob Washburn, yes, we know your last name now. Writing Club is just kind of a nice little group of people who really enjoy expressing themselves through writing, we hold a nice little contest every year, it's a poetry contest, this year's winner was Jonah, so yes, our valedictorian. And I'm going to pass this over to Amber now.
Hi, I'm Amber, I'm here with my mom Danielle Waller and I'm the vice president.
I don't believe that I have my co-editors tonight here from the yearbook, but I wanted you to know that the yearbook is done, they have been delivered, all of your copies are here delivered to the main ad building and the seniors will be getting their yearbook, I believe, is it Wednesday afternoon, guys, we have our, we let the seniors out of sixth hour early and they all get their yearbooks and get a chance to be with their friends in the cafeteria signing them and it's a very nice event, so we look forward to that. The next group to come up would be the YES Club with Ms. Sahara, any YES members here? Nope. Okay, that wraps it up, I think you get a sense of how busy some of these kids are, they're involved in so many things and this is a great opportunity for them to be in the spotlight, they're sponsors to get the recognition that they deserve for all their hard work and I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Janay.
We're just gonna have a couple more items on the agenda and then we'll take a recess for you folks to leave because we know you have to get out of here early, so. Next on the agenda is the 2013-2014 Roseville Community Schools Scholarship Foundation Scholarship recipients, that's on the back of our agendas. How many we have this year, seventy? No. Fifty, fifty less, seventy? Thirty, thirty-six. Congratulations to the recipients, next is comments from the Board of Education Members and Administrators, so this is a little stat, we're gonna give it to Mr. De Felice first tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I really enjoyed coming here tonight to see all the hard work the students have done, it's very impressive and it makes me very happy to be part of the school board and reside here in the city of Roseville, so thank you to the parents, the students and everybody that sponsored and helps, thank you.
Same as Joe said, I mean, this is one of, you know, one of the many favorites that we have as board members to have this evening, but you know, as Ms. Janay said, public education, I mean, we're always constantly taking the hits and especially, you know, our little city here of Roseville, I mean, as I say it every year, put us up against anybody and just listen to the list of these schools that our students are going to once they're leaving this facility, so you know, stand proud, make sure you tell us and keep us proud. Saturday, you know, I'm sitting or walking around at the Dream Dash and I walk by this table and this, you know, little girl's sitting there with two books that she's published and I'm looking at her and looking at her and it's like, oh my god, that is Galen Mayer. You know, not only has she published two books, but I mean, you know, now going on to veterinary medicine, you know, how ironic, she's been now dealing with horses for how many years in competition and, you know, where do you find the time? Keep it up and it's a proud, I'm proud to be up here and thank you.
Ms. Green? I'd just like to say congratulations to everybody, congratulations to the parents for doing a fine job with these young people and it makes me feel good to be a part of this district, so keep up the good work.
I'd like to congratulate all the students, it's been an honor to have you here tonight, just a hint, since you did something really good, it's a good time to collect on it tonight so everybody's happy, congratulations.
Mr. Scott?
Congratulations to the students, the parents, the faculty that showed up tonight, this is one of the better evenings for a school board member and school board to see the brightest and the finest kids we have, thank you.
I get to say that you all stole all of my thunder, right? The future of our country is in good hands, thank you.
Congratulations to all of you students out there, thank you to the parents that have supported the schools and US students, the faculty, we thank them for all that they have done, this is gonna be on cable television probably within the next two weeks and if anybody wants a copy, if you don't have cable, just let us know, we can make you a copy.
Ms. Green, now you're up.
Just thank you to the parents and the kids and also to the faculty, I know a lot of you don't, you're not getting extra money to do these things, for taking the time to work with our kids, thank you.
Ms. Tanner?
Just congratulations to everybody.
Ms. Basil?
Same thing, you make us very proud, very, very proud.
I've always known this has been a great district, I've been here since kindergarten, congratulations.
Finally graduating. Congratulations students and staff, parents, this is your reward for being great parents and we look forward to seeing all of you at graduation, most of you at graduation, so thank you. So right now, there's a name from the public wish to be heard at this time, we have a public hearing now and we'll have one at the end of the meeting. The public hearing is closed, we'll take a recess now so you folks can lean graciously and we'll continue our meeting, you're welcome to stay though, thank you.